That's a call to order, the Select Board meeting of August 28. We are going to go, according to Mass General law, Chapter 30a, Section 21. We are going to proceed to executive session. I need a motion on that. I need a motion on that.
Still moved. Still moved.
Second. 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 Any discussion on that? Any discussion on that? We do not need a roll call vote. We do not need a roll call vote. All in favor, please say aye. All in favor, please say aye.
Just do a roll call vote. Just do a roll call vote.
I will, okay. I will, okay. A roll call vote to be covered the base. A roll call vote to be covered the base. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Mickelson, Mr. McDonald, Mrs. Brooks. Mr. Mickelson, Mr. McDonald, Mrs. Brooks.
Yes. Yes.
Chair votes yes, four zero. Chair votes yes, four zero. We will go into executive session and hope to be back on time at 6:30. We will go into executive session and hope to be back on time at 6:30.
... This is an open meeting. It begins here in room 304. The meeting is being recorded. We will have remote voting because one of our members is on remote. We now ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Please sit. This will be the safest meeting we've ever had.
Maybe.
Okay, we have, we've signed the warrant and are ready to move on. Six thirty hearing for R and P Variety. Ready to step forward and please announce your name and who you are and what you're here for, please.
Good evening. Attorney John Moretti in Demarcus Law Offices. With me is Cornell Patel.
Hello.
And Somia Reddy. We're here today for two amendments to the beer and wine package store license for R and P Variety, Inc. One is a stock transfer request. Cornell is selling a portion of the shares to Somia. And the other is a change of manager to Somia, the manager of record. She is TIP certified. She has been working at the store to get some training. They do have an ID scanner and Cornell has operated the store for the past five or six years now with no violations with the board. So with that, I'll take any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board?
I see everything's checked off.
Yeah, everything's checked off. We don't have any, I don't recall any issues.
No.
So I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second. Any comments or questions? We'll have a roll call vote. Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie on Zoom?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimous. Thanks, good luck, and thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Our next hearing is with EverSource to install four new J O poles along Allen Street.
Good evening, Chair, and members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening. Jessica Elder, right-of-way agent representing EverSource. EverSource is proposing to install four new joint open poles. These are mid-sman poles. We are doing a lot of replacement along Allen Street, trying to upgrade our system. These poles will be there for, basically, it's a much-needed capacity in the South Dartmouth area to improve that area with the poles and new wires and equipment. The project is a pretty, pretty long project, you know, with all the poles we're replacing as well as the new ones that we're requesting to propose. We definitely will be needing a detail because it's right on Allen Street.
You pick.
And the project, I mean, each pole is approximately two days to install. But we also, like I said, will be doing some pole replacements and upgrading wires and equipment on the poles.
Questions? Mr. McDonald?
Is the contractor that's doing the work that will be installing the poles, are they the same ones that did the work down over on Hemlock Street?
We install our poles.
You install the poles?
We install the poles.
Okay, so.
Was it underground work? Was it, are you sure it was?
Well, let's put it this way. It was a utility, it was a utility pole that was installed through a sewer line completely. And the town had to come up with about $7,211 to make the repairs, which was put into claim to EverSource, which was denied by our insurance carrier. So I'm, that's one thing that's got me a little bit bothered about that. And second, we have requested from EverSource a list of double poles in the town for the last number of years. We don't have that list. So at this point in time, I am not inclined to approve this request until, number one, I get the list of the double poles in town and a remedy as to when those poles are going to be removed. And second, until I see a check of $7,211 for the repairs made out to the town of Dartmouth for the repairs on Hemlock Street.
I'll pass this information on. I'm not here for any of that. I don't know anything, anything about any of that.
I would hope, I would hope that you pass it on because my motion right now is to deny this request.
I'll second that motion.
Hemlock, that was?
It was work order 10585379. Well, that's, yeah, that's the current work order. But this was an incident that took place on October of 2022 when EverSource replaced a utility pole on Hemlock Street. During the installation of the new utility pole, EverSource argued through a sewer service under a newly constructed sidewalk. Although the broken clay pipe was brought to the surface, the new pole was still installed. Several months later, once the sewer backup was reported, the DPW investigated the complaint to find the utility pole installed through the sewer line. Rather than force EverSource to relocate the new pole, they hired a contractor to make the repair and reroute the sewer. The cost of the sewer repair was $5,500 and the cost to repair the sidewalks was around $1,711. The claim was denied by EverSource's insurance claim department. So you guys put a, you guys put a pole through a sewer line, caused the backup, town had to go in, fix it. Instead of having you guys remove the pole so that we can repair the line, they rerouted the sewer, the sewer line. So I am inclined not to approve anything EverSource does until this matter is taken care of.
You made a motion, Ms. McDonald?
Yes, I did.
Okay, continue discussion.
There's not much to discuss. It was to deny the request.
Was there anybody that you were in contact with or that I?
You want to have EverSource get a?
I'm not, no, I'm not sure if he would.
Town administrator?
Yes.
Go through the town administrator.
Of August 28th, this is an open meeting. It begins here in room 304. The meeting is being recorded. We will have remote voting because one of our members is on remote. We now ask you to please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing while we honor our veterans, both past and present. Thank you very much. Please sit. This will be the safest meeting we've ever had.
May- maybe.
Okay, we have, we've signed the warrant and ready to move on. 6:30 hearing for R and P Variety. Ready to step forward and please announce your name and who you are and what you're here for, please.
Good evening. Attorney John Moretti in Demarcus Law Offices. With me is Cornell Patel.
Hello.
And Somia Reddy. We're here today for two amendments to the beer and wine package store license for R and P Variety, Inc. One is a stock transfer request. Cornell is selling a portion of the shares to Somia. And the other is a change of manager to Somia, the manager of record. She is TIP certified. She has been working at the store to get some training. They do have an ID scanner and Cornell has operated the store for the past five or six years now with no violations with the board. So with that, I'll take any questions the board may have.
Any questions from the board?
I see everything's checked off.
Yeah, everything's checked off. We don't have any, I don't recall any issues.
No.
So I'll make a motion to approve the request.
I'll second that.
Any comments or questions? We'll have a roll call vote. Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie on Zoom?
Yes.
And the chair votes yes, unanimous. Thanks. Good luck and thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Our next hearing is with EverSource to install four new J O poles along Allen Street.
Good evening, Chairman and members of the board. Thank you for having me this evening. Jessica Elder, right away agent representing EverSource. EverSource is proposing to install four new joint O poles. These are midsmen poles. We are doing a lot of replacement along Allen Street, trying to upgrade our, our system. These poles will be there for, it's a, basically it's a, it's a much needed capacity in the South Dartmouth area to improve that area with, with the poles and new wires and equipment. The project is a pretty, pretty long project, you know, with all the poles we're replacing as well as the new ones that we're requesting to propose. We definitely will be needing a detail because it's right on Allen Street.
You pick.
And the project, I mean, each pole is approximately two days to, to install. But we also, like I said, will be doing some pole replacements and upgrading wires and equipment on the poles.
Questions? Mr. McDonald?
Is the contractor that's doing the work that will be installing the poles, are they the same ones that did the work down over on Hemlock Street?
We install our poles.
You install the poles?
We install the poles.
Okay, so.
Was it underground work? Was it, are you sure it was?
Well, let's put it this way. It was a utility, it was a utility pole that was installed through a sewer line completely. And the town had to come up with about $7,211 to make the repairs, which was put into claim to EverSource, which was denied by our insurance carrier. So I'm, that's one thing that's got me a little bit bothered about that. And second, we have requested from EverSource a list of double poles in the town for the last number of years. We don't have that list. So at this point in time, I am not inclined to approve this request until number one, I get the list of the double poles in town and a remedy as to when those poles are going to be removed. And second, until I see a check of $7,211 for the repairs made out to the town of Dartmouth for the repairs on Hemlock Street. So.
I'll pass this information on. I'm not here for any of that. I don't know anything, anything about any of that.
I would hope, I would hope that you pass it on because my motion right now is to deny this request.
I'll second that motion.
Hemlock, that was?
It was work order 10585379. Well, that's, yeah, that's the current work order. But this was an incident that took place on October of 2022 when EverSource replaced a utility pole on Hemlock Street. During the installation of the new utility pole, EverSource augured through a sewer service under a newly constructed sidewalk. Although the broken clay pipe was brought to the surface, the new pole was still installed. Several months later, once the sewer backup was reported, the DPW investigated the complaint to find the utility pole installed through the sewer line. Rather than force EverSource to relocate the new pole, they hired a contractor to make the repair and reroute the sewer. The cost of the sewer repair was $5,500 and the cost to repair the sidewalks was around $1,711. The claim was denied by EverSource's insurance claim department. So you guys put a, you guys put a pole through a sewer line, caused the backup, town had to go in, fix it. Instead of having you guys remove the pole so that we can repair the line, they rerouted the sewer, the sewer line. So I am inclined not to approve anything EverSource does until this matter is taken care of.
You made a motion, Ms. McDonald?
Yes, I did.
Second, okay. Continue discussion.
Not much to discuss. It was to deny the request.
Is there anybody that you were in contact with or that I?
You want to have, have EverSource get a?
I'm not, no, I'm not sure if he would.
Town administrator?
Yes.
Go through the town administrator.
Go through the town administrator and the superintendent of public works, Jim Barber.
The only I would add is my guess is the four replacement poles is a major and important project and it shouldn't be held up. So that's all the more reason for EverSource to get this taken care of. Anybody else have any comments? We're going to vote?
Yep.
Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Is a no to deny?
It's, the motion is to deny. So we're voting yes to deny.
All right, I'll vote yes.
Okay. Chair votes as well yes, unanimous, and we'll wait to hear from EverSource.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The messenger?
No.
Oh.
No way. Okay, thank you. Nice job, Ms. McDonald.
Yeah.
Been waiting for years to do that.
Uh, no.
I'm sure he's not happy about it.
Nope. Luther Business TGIF Fridays Change of Management Request. Someone here? Great. Please speak in the microphones and introduce yourself.
Melanie Lynn, General Manager of TGIF Fridays, looking for a manager change for the liquor license.
Previous manager, so you'll be the new manager. Okay.
Seems everything's in order. Motion to approve.
I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Any questions or comments? Are we ready to vote? Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, 5-0. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. Police promotions. Mr. McInnes? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, upon receiving your approval last month, I began the selection process for deputy chief. The process was open to lieutenants who met the qualifications. It consisted of a process that I'm going to just summarize for you here. It included reviewing each candidate's resume, what is a recommendation that were provided, review of the personnel file, commendations and disciplinary items. Also, we did a department-wide survey, which looked to identify and rank the most important leadership characteristics for this position. The results of that survey were then passed along to the sergeants and supervisors to rank how each of the candidates met those qualifications, those, those characteristics of a leader. We also did a panel interview, consisted of five members. And finally, I consulted with my current deputy chief, Tony Vincent. We have over 15 years' experience working with each of these candidates. And in addition to our personal knowledge in, in working with them, the selected candidate also needs to fit into the existing framework that we have. It's a small group. There's essentially three of us. The selected candidate needs to be able to integrate into that group. I felt fortunate to have two qualified candidates apply for this position. Throughout the selection process, one of the candidates consistently was identified as the top choice. I'm pleased tonight to endorse Lieutenant Victor Morenci for deputy chief, and I have a summary of his qualifications. He's been a police officer with us for 16 and a half years, the last five as a supervisor. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, currently works as the 4-12 shift relief commander, also oversees our communication division. He's a former field training officer. Recently completed the Police Executive Research Forum's Senior Management Institute for Police. This provides senior police executives with intensive training in the latest management concepts and practices. He's also received the following commendations. 2022, he received a letter of commendation. 2019, received the chief's award. 2018, received the Department Achievement Award and Distinguished Service Award. Based on his training experience, my belief in him, along with widespread support from the department officers and supervisors, I have no doubt that Lieutenant Morenci will excel as the next deputy chief, and I ask for your support. Thank you.
Quite endorsement. Comments?
No. When, yeah, I just got a minor thing, maybe major but minor. Chief, when, when you come before us and you make very good, hard decisions, you vet these decisions out and you come before us with the perfect candidate, so far your record's 100%. So if that's your decision, then I, I will back your decision without a doubt. And you know my, how I feel about the police department.
Thank you. They are tough decisions and I take them very seriously.
Oh, you do. And thank you.
Yeah. Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Um, knowing both candidates, I figured this was going to be an extremely difficult choice. I've always supported the, I mean, our role as commissioner, to be honest with you, it's a lot of it is ceremony. It really is. I mean, you're going to come to us for your, your, you know, the decisions, we have to approve it. To be honest with you, there's, other than knowing a lot of the officers here and waving to them, and I don't know that much of what you guys do other than to protect and serve. And I know this decision. I know Brian, I know Vic, and I know this is a very difficult situation. But I have the full faith and trust in you, Brian, as chief and Tony as deputy chief, and also the rank and file of, of this force to make sure that whatever decision that you guys bring to us for confirmation is the best decision. I've always felt that way and I will always support that way. And I will support this decision made by you guys wholeheartedly. I think Brian is an excellent officer. He's an excellent person. Vic, same way. He's an excellent person. He's also a little more scarier than Brian, but still, that's just, you know, I, it's a tou, it was a, I can see this, I, I saw this coming as a tough choice. And this is the choice that you have made. I will support that choice 100%. And I've always supported, you know, it's easy to say always support, but you know something? When the rubber hits the road, whether you guys, you know, whether we support you guys or not, you guys know that. And the rank and file know that too. They know how much we support you guys. So.
Thank you. And it was a very difficult decision, and I appreciate your continued support.
Any comments, Mrs. Brooks?
Nothing.
Mr. Gracie?
No, I'm good. I think I said it very well.
I, I'd just briefly say, I had the privilege of really working with Chief Levecq on a new building through that whole process and got to know him and the kind of quality individually he is and how he runs the department. And on a personal basis, I watched Vic Morenci go through school with my kids and the progression. It's quite emotional to see that he's end up where he is. It's a fantastic opportunity. And the choice you made, we stand by and I, I think it's, I think it's, it'll be, it'll work out great. And thank you for the time and work put in to make these choices.
Thank you.
We have the finest police department in America, so it always works out that way.
Yes, sir.
Okay, next.
So there has to be, so we have to, we have to make the motion?
Yes.
So I'd like to make the motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make the motion that Lieutenant Victor Morenci be appointed Deputy Chief of the Town of Dartmouth Police Department as of tonight. Congratulations. He's a fine young man. He'll represent himself very, very well. And, you know, it's unfortunate that we had, it's very tough and unfortunate that we had two really qualified people, but only one, obviously only one, one opening. And there's plenty of time left to, to, you know, I knew we're going to, somewhere down the line, deputy chief's going to be retiring, maybe three and a half years, four years. That's not a long time, as we all know. Time moves fast. So Brian can, can just keep his, keep his, keep moving forward and doing his job properly and he'll have an opportunity when his time comes. But again, congratulations, Victor, deputy chief.
That's a long motion.
Yeah, really.
We have a second. Longest motion around. Any discussion on their motion? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, unanimous, 5-0. Welcome.
Thank you.
Congratulations to your wife and children.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I know you probably have a busy agenda. What would you, would you like to hear from Deputy Chief Morenci briefly, just to?
You have the floor.
Yes.
I'm going to keep this super, super brief. I just want to thank the chief for his recommendation. I want to thank the board for your approval. And I want to thank my family who's here tonight for all their support. I really look forward to assuming my new role and joining this great leadership team that we already have and just moving forward to best serve the department and also our community. So I just want to thank you again.
Beautiful.
Thank you. I do have a few, a few more recommendations.
The floor is yours.
Okay. I'm now looking to fill two vacancies in the rank of lieutenant, one of them that you just created. These recommendations are based on each candidate's ranking in civil service as well as their qualifications. My first recommendation is promotion of Sergeant Joseph Raposa. Summary of his qualifications are as follows. He's been a police officer with us for 20 years, last nine as a supervisor. Currently serves as a supervisor in charge of our support services division, holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice, he's a Semelik Dive Team Commander and an Honored Guard member. He's received the following department commendations. 2022, the Department Achievement Award. 2020, Meritorious Service Award. 2007, he received a letter of recognition from the select board. In addition, he has numerous letters of commendation from supervisors and the public. My second recommendation for lieutenant would be Sergeant Scott Stanton. He's been an officer here with us for almost 29 years, ten as a supervisor. He currently serves as a supervisor on the 4-12 relief. He's a Semelik Dive Team Leader, Honored Guard Member, former field training officer, bike unit supervisor and instructor. He's received the following commendations. 2022, the Life Saving Award. 2020, Department Commendation Award. 2018, Department Achievement Award. 2007, Letter of Recognition from the Select Board. 2004, Police Combat Cross. In 1998, he received a letter of recognition from Rhode Island Governor Lincoln Almond. In addition, he has numerous letters of commendation from supervisors and the public. And I have one final recommendation, is to fill the vacancy in the rank of sergeant should you approve these lieutenants. For that, I recommend Officer Paul O'Donnell. He's been with us for 11 and a half years. Currently serves in the Patrol Division. He holds a bachelor's degree in criminal justice. He's a department use of force firearms instructor and armorer, former field training officer, recipient of the Combat Action Ribbon while serving as a sergeant in the United States Marine Corps in Iraq. Officer O'Donnell has significantly improved as a police officer, and I feel he'd make a great addition to our supervisory staff. Thank you.
Yes, sure. You want to do that?
Hold on, individually?
You want to do it individually?
That's what.
Okay.
Are we ready to make a motion?
Yeah, definitely. Yeah. I'll make a motion that we promote Sergeant Joseph Raposa to the rank of lieutenant in the Dartmouth Police Department.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, unanimous, 5-0.
Okay, Mr.
Congratulations.
Give them all at once. Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Make a motion that we promote Sergeant Scott Stanton to the rank of lieutenant in the Dartmouth Police Department.
Second.
Second. Any, any comments or questions? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, 5-0, approved.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. McDonald?
Make a motion to promote Officer Paul O'Donnell to be promoted to the police sergeant in the Dartmouth Police Department.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, 5-0, approved.
Thank you. Just to, before you, before you leave, I want to thank the families of these officers. You know, of, you're really the unherald heroes of this because without your support, they can't do what they do for us. So not only are they out there protecting you, they're out there protecting me, protecting him, protecting them. And that's, can't say much more than that. You guys are their rock and you have our undying gratitude as being part of the family. And for the members of the blue who are here, very few words can you say other than thank you for doing what you do, especially in these times. We appreciate it. Many people out there in this town appreciate exactly what you do every single day. I want to thank you and to be honest with you, I want to applaud you.
Be safe out there.
Yes.
Thank you. It'll take a couple of minutes for the, for us to get back on the streets.
So his son Victor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
He's going.
That was quite a sermon. Renewable energy and recycling discussion. We had a young lady who wrote in to us a few weeks back regarding the issue about the aggregate demand and spoke to her at length and I, I found that I had an all-consuming, passionate young lady regarding renewables and recyclables, et cetera. And I, I thought it'd be appropriate we have her invite her come in, have her come in and make a few comments. These are hers and hers only. But Annika Dupree, please join us and speak right into the microphone. If you want to introduce yourself in any other way, go right ahead.
Hi, Mr. Chairman and members of the select board. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Annika Dupree. I'm going to be a sophomore. name is Annika Dupree. I'm going to be a sophomore at Dartmouth High in like a day. And I am a local climate activist. I'm a member of Governor Healey's inaugural Youth Climate Council. And since I was in seventh grade, I have been working with the Massachusetts South Coast Chapter of the Climate Reality Project and Be the Solution to Pollution, which is a beach cleanup organization. And today, I am here to talk about the aggregation program, just to promote it to the general public, and to the issues of thick plastic bags and NIPS as they relate to the environment and human health.
Okay.
So I'm going to start with the aggregation program. I know the Select Board has talked about it before, so I'm going to go over it very briefly. I just want to promote it to the public as a really great option if you want to do something about the climate crisis. The aggregation program basically provides renewable energy to residents and businesses. And in my opinion, like renewable energy is the most important step you can take to prevent the climate crisis from getting worse. So really, all you have to do is go to massce.com/dartmouth. And there you can sign up. If you don't know if you're in the aggregation program on your ever-source bill, it'll say Constellation New Energy Dartmouth CEA, and that means that you're in it. So why should you do this? Because obviously, for the planet, but you're also saving money. This is rounded numbers, but if you use 500 kilowatts an hour of electricity per month in your home, and you're on ever-source basic, that's $80 on your bill. If you use the standard option for the aggregation program, which meets all of Massachusetts' renewable energy requirements, that's $50. And if you opt up to 50% renewable energy, that's $60. And if you do 100%, that's $70. So either way, you're not paying as much money as you would. And I know electricity rates are high nowadays, so that is a deal for everyone. So I just want to get that out of the way. For anybody who's still considering doing that or didn't know about the program, you should absolutely sign up. The second thing I want to talk about is thick plastic bags. I know Chairman Tittlebaum and I are both passionate about this issue. In 2019, Dartmouth banned thin film, thin, thin film, sorry, plastic bags. But thick plastic bags, like if you don't know what those are, they sell them out. He's going to give an example.
The new alternative.
Yeah.
Nice and thick.
Yeah. So they're millimeters more thicker than a normal plastic bag, but they are not banned. Because the reason thin plastic bags were banned is because they're considered single-use plastic. And those bags, believe it or not, are considered reusable somehow. So the reason why I think that we should get rid of these bags as an alternative is because they're just a loophole that are arguably worse for the environment. Because if it is a thicker material, it takes 20 years for a plastic bag to decompose. So if there's more of it, that's taking a longer amount of time. And what people don't know about when plastic decomposes is that it breaks into microplastics. And as it's breaking into microplastics, greenhouse gases are being admitted into the environment while that's happening. Greenhouse gases are used at every single stage of plastics life, and when you are producing it. Plastic itself is made out of crude oil, coal, and natural gas. So every step of the way, you're emitting CO2 into the atmosphere. And microplastics themselves, they have flame retardants, pigments, and antimicrobial agents in them that leach from them. And as a coastal town, much of the seafood we eat contains microplastics due to how they have escaped into the environment and are polluting our ocean. There are also free radicals in all plastics, and a buildup of free radicals in cells can damage DNA and RNA, as well as possibly kill the cell. So when you're eating microplastics through seafood, this is harming your human health. So my suggestion was going to be to switch to paper bags, because those are more expensive, yes, but it is an investment for our planet, for our health, for our children's health, and for anyone who has nieces and nephews. But I know that Chairman Tittlebaum wanted to suggest even just skipping over paper and going straight to like companies and local businesses giving out reusable bags. Because it's less of an investment for stores because they're paying for these reusable bags once, giving them out to customers rather than buying new paper bags every single week. Do you want to talk about that at all?
I do. I think I comment on that. I think that my sense of that would be that, do we, would that be an act of town meeting to go?
Would be a ban of some sort.
Yeah. So I'm thinking that obviously the fall town meeting is not a possibility, but we put a group together and work on it, and we come up with a plan for the plastic bags or whatever else there is, and get it ready for a spring town meeting, which is in June.
Okay.
And I talk it out, talk to the right people, and maybe get the retailers in to talk to them and make a proposal to, and I think that we can put that together, and we can include any issue we want in that committee. And I'm hoping that you, you'll be busy at school, but you would help us and serve with us as well, but we'll put that together. The goal would be to put something together in some form for spring town meeting.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Continue. Thank you.
Yeah, there are just two more things I want to talk about. The next one might be a little bit more controversial is NIPS. I was at the New Bedford Licensing Board meeting where they were banned, which thank you to the New Bedford Licensing Board, but it was a little hectic. So NIPS, like thin film plastic bags, are single-use. But what's different about NIPS is that they cannot be recycled. Even if they're made out of plastic that can be recycled, they're too small to be processed by the machines or they get stuck in them. So they fall out or they get stuck in them. And the same thing goes for how plastic is with plastic bags, right? It's made out of fossil fuels. NIPS, they can wash into storm drains and end up in the ocean, so then they're emitting greenhouse gases that they divide in the environment. The other thing about NIPS is that they have alcohol in them. And having NIPS in liquor stores aids in abets in alcoholism and drunk driving. Because if somebody has a nip, they can just chug it down, throw it out their window, and drive off, right? And then that's in the environment, and now we have a drunk driver on the streets. The biggest concern at the licensing board meeting was how this is going to affect local liquor stores. I'm all for supporting small businesses, of course, but I do not believe that if you get rid of NIPS, that they are going to damage like liquor stores' profits. Like, they might be affected a little bit, but it's not going to put them out of business. A lot of people speaking there said, "We're going to go out of business?" To quote somebody who was a speaker, if you're in, like if your main model for your liquor store depends on NIPS and like they rely on NIPS, you probably need a new financial plan. So, yeah, NIPS, the biggest thing about them, they can't be recycled. And that's why I think we should ban them. And there's nothing really good that comes out of them. The last thing I want to talk about, I know banning single-use plastics is very difficult at the town level because there is a lot of repercussions that come with that. I want to mention the Board of Health Director, Christopher Mouchaud, very briefly. I spoke to him about trying to ban single-use plastics, and he gave very extensive and thoughtful emails about why he doesn't agree with that. Because if you get rid of plastic, well then you have to switch to paper and biodegradables, then you have to make compostable stations for that, and all these different things that come with that. So I appreciated his feedback. So I would offer a different action, rather than just an all-out ban of single-use plastics. And that would be to make those, you know those sets of plastic utensils you get from a restaurant, and it's wrapped in Saran Wrap, and it comes with a napkin and ketchup and plastic utensils? To make those available only by request. I know in my family, if we're getting takeout, we usually bring that home and use our own silverware. And I think that a lot of people end up doing that, and they don't need these things that come with the meal, so they throw it away. So I would advocate for not necessarily a ban on single-use plastics, but making it available by request in restaurants and stores, specifically when it comes to condiments and utensils. So thank you so much for listening to me. I really appreciate you guys giving me this platform. If you have any questions, feel free. I'll try my best to answer them.
Yeah, the last part you discussed is actually pretty interesting, because the state of Rhode Island had, if I'm not mistaken, almost a ban on straws. And the only, the reason why I found out is going to the A and W in North Smithfield, we had to, you know, it's like, "Where are the straws?" And the person serving said, "You have to ask for them now. We can't give them to you. It's a state law." And I said, "Really?" I said, "I never heard of that. Never saw it. Never..." Nothing was ever put out in the public about this. So, I mean, that's an interesting, that's an interesting concept, because it's also a way of changing almost somewhat of a lifestyle, you know? I mean, yeah, we go to restaurants all the time, bring in, yeah, we use our own utensils, and no big deal. There are times when, you know, you have no choice, because they don't give it to you.
Yeah.
And then there are times when they do give it to you. So, yeah, I mean, that one there, that's an interesting concept. The thick, the thick bags, that's something, as the chair said, is something that needs to be, you know, worked on for town meeting because of the ban. The nip thing, though, I think, I think the nip thing almost has to be dealt with at the state level. Because of, because of the alcohol licensing, you know, the towns can do their own little thing. The licensing board right now, I think, in New Bedford is coming under fire from the city councils, mostly because I'm almost positive the public is, goes to their councils, you know, go to the councilors, so they in turn go to the licensing board. That almost has to be dealt with on the bottle bill, kind of level. You know, as Mr. Mickelson had said, you know, yeah, they'll get rid of the little nip bottles, but then they'll increase the size. You know, so now it becomes a bigger, more, more plastic. And, you know, and the recycling of the plastics, you know, you know, to be honest with you, we, the public, have been duped, you know, by, you know, by the, by the people who produce these plastics. You know, you look at your numbers, you know, there's number one plastic, number two plastic, number three plastic, number four plastic. You know, all those numbers, there's only one plastic that ever gets recycled. All the rest is just garbage. You know, and we've been led to believe that no matter what we throw in our recycle bin, it's all going to get recycled. Well, no, not really. So I, there has to be, there has to be education, but there also has to be truth. Government needs to come clean with the recycling programs, as do the manufacturers. But the only way you're going to get that is if the public demands it. So, and right now, you know, half, half, half of everybody out there believe there's a, there's a problem with the climate. The other half doesn't think there is.
I, after the summer we've had, I don't think it's worth arguing about, if the climate crisis is real, I think it's more worth arguing about, like, what are we going to do about it? And I'm not sure what type of plastic NIPS are made out of what number, but a lot of bottles aren't made out of number one plastic, and that can be recycled, like is guaranteed to be recycled. The, just the key thing about NIPS, though, like I know what you're saying, like, no plastic can really be recycled, but like, NIPS just cannot be recycled. And they're just so small that they're getting into storm drains, into the environment. And it's, that coupled with alcoholism and how like it's aiding and abetting and drunk driving, just makes me feel like there are no benefits to it. I know, I mean, advocating at the state level, that's a pretty slow process. And I know, yeah, the licensing board is kind of worried for them. I don't know how, people are kind of reacting in a bad way, and people are upset it wasn't voted on. But I do think that, like, is there a way to not go through the Dartmouth Licensing Board and go through a different board in Dartmouth?
Licensing Board.
We do?
Yeah. This, we are it.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
We are, we are the licensing board.
You've actually come to the right place.
Okay.
New Bedford parcels it out.
Okay.
I would, I would say that you brought up a number of issues, and even New Bedford, one of the issues is that aside from the NIPS bottles, it wasn't a public vote, it was done by three people. And those are all issues that I think we have between now and town meeting to sort out and decide what level we want to do it, and do it in pieces, and decide whether it's a state issue or not. But we can ferret that out. I think the interest is there. But what I really want to, what I really want to focus in on is this is a 15-year-old 10th grader with the passion and knowledge that maybe give a kick in the butt that we need as a, as a town and as a, as a country and as a world to say that we can do better. And I, I want to listen to you. And I want to be enthused by you and passionate by you because you have it. And ultimately, it's a decision, democracy rules. People want it or they don't, that's the way it goes. But we can deliver a message that says, here's what we think we should do. And the message to all the retailers out there is, this, nothing's been decided. This is an ongoing process, but look out for town meeting down the road in June. And I think this group can come up together, present to us, the licensing board, you know, what, what we end up with, something that's relevant and doable. That's my view. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes. Congratulations. You're a remarkable young lady. Really, very impressive.
Thank you.
And I thank you very much for all the hard work you've put into this program for tonight. And I know how deeply you care about it. You can see it in, in just your mannerisms.
Yeah.
You're fully committed, and it's wonderful.
Yeah.
But, you know, getting on this nip issue, and I always, my thought was at some, early on, that maybe we could make it a deposit to get them off the street. And if you can gather enough of these in barrels, I would imagine they could, these machines could deal with it. I don't know that.
Yeah, I'm not sure that...
I don't know the recyclable issue. But the other issue on the alcoholism side is, so New Bedford votes against these NIPS. And in 72 hours, the manufacturers now have a new nip, but the nip's a little larger. So, so now they take twice as much on that one drink, and they throw it out. Now you've got a bigger, bigger problem. And these things are going to go on and on and on, because we're fighting, we're fighting big business. And, but I like the, I like the recyclable, I'm sorry, the deposit end of it, where the town gathers some money, but it's really not about the money. It's about getting these, these bottles off our grounds, in our water, in our sewer systems, in our streets and parks, where young kids can, you know, pick it up, maybe drink some of it if there's something left. It's, it's out of hand, and it's everywhere. All of it. And Dartmouth is no different than New Bedford. It's all, and you see that.
Mr. Brooks? Thanks, Ellen.
The thought I want to have is that when we know better, we should do better. And when I chose to run for the Select Board, I met with a high school student. And the year I ran, the issue of the mascot was on the, or the logo was on the agenda. And when he contacted me, I thought he was contacting me to discuss that. And in fact, we met at Scuttlebutts in Paydeneum, and he talked about the fact that in his lifetime, where we were sitting, maybe completely underwater. And he said his biggest concern was climate change. And I was so pleased that there were students out there who were thinking beyond the logo, beyond the day-to-day, and looking at the future. In my lifetime, that may not be the case, but in your lifetime, it certainly could. And that's a reason why we should do all of the things that you talk about. We should do better. We should be taking our own bags back and forth to the different shops. We should be looking at what we're, what we're buying and how we're recycling. In Dartmouth, we do a great job recycling. So if these folks are buying NIPS and then taking them home, because they only need one ounce or so for a beverage that they're making, they can easily put that nip right into their recycle basket at home. The fact is, that's not what's happening. And when I walk, I do find a lot of nip bottles, as well as the balls, which hold actually a little bit more. And that is a problem. And the bigger problem is alcoholism, or the feeling that we need to have that alcohol. And for all of us to be on the street with someone who may be driving impaired, that's a concern. But everything you mentioned, right from, from the aggregation program, thick plastic bags, the NIPS, the convenience items, these are things we can, we know better, and we need to do better. So even if we, as consumers, go to pick up our takeout food and say, "We don't need, we're going home, we don't need the forks." I also have a friend, which at first I thought was extreme, but it makes perfect sense. She knows when she goes to a restaurant, she's not going to eat the full meal. And she brings her own takeaway container. And I have to tell you, as someone who enjoys eating out and enjoys making that meal into two, it makes perfect sense, instead of getting more and more plastic containers. So again, when... So again, when we know better, we have to do better. As Mr. Tattlebaum said, the Springtown meeting, which is in June, we need to have the language on something that we want to go on that document well in advance by March, but what I'm hoping is that you can get a group of students such as yourself from Dartmouth High School and an advisor, and I don't know what committee, but the fact that you serve on the youth climate council, changed with Governor Haley, that is so impressive.
Thank you.
Yes, so I hope that she's listening to your concerns as well.
Yeah, I just got selected like two weeks ago, so we haven't had, um, like the official meeting just yet to start it all off. But yeah, thank you so much for all your comments. As you said, individual action is important, but what I believe is individual accent, um, sorry, action is only so much compared in the face of legislation and actually stopping manufacturing plastic. So, as, we can, we can do all these things, but like companies will still be manufacturing plastic, right? So that's why I think a nip ban is effective. I think there are a lot of different things we have to talk about that come along with it, but other cities and towns in Massachusetts have proved that this is something that can be done. And when you're not buying nips, you're not supporting the companies, um, who are making them and there's less incentive for them to continue manufacturing this non-recyclable piece of plastic. So, yeah, that's all I'd say.
I agree with you, Mr. I didn't mention the proud father in the audience. Thanks for coming.
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Dida, for bringing me.
Who also smartly gave credit to your mother.
Anybody have comments?
Yeah, thank you so much.
Let's keep in touch.
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much for listening to me and having me here tonight. I really appreciate all of you, um, having me. So thank you so much. Have a good rest of your night.
You're welcome. Great job.
Great job.
Okay, wonderful. Okay. Next.
Oh, okay.
Uh.
Yep.
I'll send, uh, land acknowledgement, agreement, draft and letter. Mrs. Brooks.
Um, this is a, a great opportunity to inform the select board of the work that we've been doing with a, a small work group, has been working to advance the, um, relationship of the Dartmouth Indigenous Peoples History and Culture Committee. Um, and one of the tasks that we identified was to create a land acknowledgement statement. This is something that other communities have done, UMass Dartmouth has in their, um, for their location. Uh, and for us, the group took a lot of time looking at, uh, different variations of land acknowledgement statements from the ones used at the Smithsonian Institute, local museums, extended museums across the country and tried to create something that was Dartmouth specific. One of the things we found was that although we can identify that the tribes and smaller tribes that walked the grounds of Old Dartmouth were under the umbrella of the Wampanoag Tribe, the smaller tribes, the nations, do have, um, discussion back and forth of who was here, but to go back, you have to know that the native culture was not to own land. That was a European issue. So the natives would travel in the summer, the warmer time, towards the shore where it would be cooler and they could get, um.
Fish.
Fish and lobsters and, and clams to eat. And then as the days got cooler, they would move inland. They didn't have a summer house and a winter house. They would just physically move themselves and their family and their tribe to a, a higher ground, a better location, a drier location. And that meant that then they may have to hunt, um, they may have to grow and harvest. So in Dartmouth, it's entirely possible that many tribes were in and out of our vast landmass over that time. So instead of trying to identify or misidentify any smaller tribe, we chose to use the umbrella of the Wampanoag Tribe. In your document tonight, you see letters that are written to the tribes that have a presence currently in our region, who we are, would like to send out to them the information, and I'll read it to you. Each of the, um, letters are the same. It says, "The town of Dartmouth is in the process of formally recognizing our connection to our historic roots. To that end, we have drafted a land acknowledgement statement and are, are asking for your review and feedback. It is our goal to send this statement to the select board for their approval in advance of its unveiling at our fall town meeting in October." The land acknowledgement statement that we have drafted reads, "The town of Dartmouth acknowledges the land on which we gather as the traditional and ancestral home of the Wampanoag Tribes and other indigenous nations. We take this opportunity to thank and honor the original caretakers of this land and their past, present and future generations." And finally, we respectfully request your feedback for consideration to be received by September fifteenth. Contact may be forwarded to the office of our town administrator, Sean McGinnis. And I realize that some members of our, our, um, select board are looking at the land acknowledgement statement for the first time tonight. This also gives you an opportunity to reflect on this and also to make suggestions or feedback to Mr. McGinnis, who will then forward it to the working group. But you can see in your document that we're sending it to Chief Edward Gray Fox Page, who is from the Pecasset Wampanoag Tribe of Massachusetts and Rhode Island. Um, Chairman George Spring Buffalo, the Pecasset Wampanoag Tribe of the Poconoc Nation and the Wampanoag Tribe of the Gayhead Aquina, uh, which is Cheryl Andrews Maltese is the tribal chairwoman. And full disclosure, it was her brother Clyde Andrews who drew what we now have as our Dartmouth Indian head logo.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
It's, uh, your thirty-plus years of education came to with that presentation.
Great job.
Fantastic job. You said a lot in a short time.
Great job.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think it's a wonderful opportunity for us to do that.
Um, as a member of the working group now and someone who spent years of my life in a, in Dartmouth Indian logo uniform, um, I think it's important that we make sure that by honoring the continuation of using that logo, that we make sure that our students and our townspeople are afforded the understanding that we respect that connection and want to honor it.
Very deeply we should. Great job.
I mean, yeah, the two-part, it's a two-pronged attack. One is with, uh, education and curriculum in the schools. The second is, uh, public acknowledgement of areas and history around town and, uh, I'll just quickly add that I did speak with Lily Chamberlain, uh, to the school committee last week, trying to finalize the language that they had some objections to and, um, lo and behold, with all this public, uh, discourse, um, we've now heard recently from at least one or two tribal members who are Dartmouth residents and we have the potential to complete the assortment and have them in there, which is what we always wanted in the first place. So, um, and we'll become, we're gonna go legit as opposed to being a, a whatever.
Backroom work group, yeah.
Thank you.
But as Mr. Tattlebaum said, the work group has been doing, has taken, uh, the opportunity to really look at what does it look like to educate the townspeople on that connection?
Any other questions or comments? We need, do we need, we're not voting on this, just information.
Vote to send out the letter.
Vote to send out the letter.
Need a motion.
Send, motion to send letters.
Three letters.
Letters.
Okay. Second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
Just, um, before you send out the letter to, um, Ms. Andrews Maltese, just make sure the word tribal is spelled correctly. It says Tybo.
Oh, good catch.
Okay. Congratulations, Mr. McDonald.
Yeah.
Okay, we're ready to vote?
I don't funk, no, I didn't funk, you wish.
Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, unanimous five-zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
A great presentation. Thank you. Next, ARPA funding items discussion. Mr. McGinnis?
Uh, yes, so I was here at a previous select board meeting, uh, I think last month, just to talk about the next round of the ARPA funding that's being proposed for the select board to approve. Um, you saw the presentation, there's a, a few small upgrades to this presentation, so I'll go through it quickly for you. Um, the American Rescue Plan Act has, you know, four eligible uses, investment in water and sewer infrastructure and broadband of revenue replacement expenditures for economic, negative economic impacts, including to small businesses and households and also premium pay for essential workers. Um, as you might recall, our total estimated reward is about ten point two million. Uh, we expect to receive directly from the federal government about three point five eight million. Uh, we're eligible for county reimbursement of five point seven six and we had anticipated that the county was gonna hold back about eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. We've just recently, uh, discussed with the county that they're not holding that back, so these are funds that will be available for us.
Nice, God bless them.
Right through, through the county to be expended, so, um, we're excited about that. So we, uh, we haven't identified the projects as of yet, but I'll get into that.
Wow, my goodness.
Uh, last year in FY twenty-three, uh, these are the projects the board approved to be funded. A number of these are, uh, in the process of, we've applied for with the county and we're either going through the process or have been approved. Uh, there's some others, HVAC upgrades for the schools, uh, those have been applied for and approved. Um, and then we have some others that we use, and I have federal over here under the source, that's what we use for our revenue replacement that would receive directly in the board. Tennis court construction, pickleball courts at the Dartmouth Regional Park on the north side, uh, the recreation center design and engineering, the purchase of the property on Russell's Mills Road. The website's been upgraded, as you can see, and they're constructing pickleball courts down on Russell's Mills Road, uh, right now. Uh, last year, this is how the breakdown of the expenditures, you can see on the left, fifty-seven percent of the funds were not allocated last year, they were slated to be allocated this year. Uh, then you can see the breakdown in the pie chart of how the funds were distributed last year. Um, so this is just a breakdown by the year, so you can see for FY twenty-four, we're anticipating five million eight hundred sixty-seven, six hundred and seventy-four, that includes the eight seventy-seven, uh, the eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand. Um, what we're proposing for this year, so there's been a big push on water and sewer infrastructure. I think the select board's been clear on that, we've had many discussions with DPW on that. Uh, one of the larger items that will be applied for if the board approves is treatment plant and system upgrades for disinfection byproducts. This is part of the drinking water system. Uh, as you know, the DPW did a water system study, uh, that was completed late spring. They presented it to the board. There's a number of improvements over the next, uh, five to fifteen years that needs to be done, so this would be part of the phase one of those improvements, uh, if approved. Uh, the second item is the capital project overages contingency fund. Uh, this is a dollar about that'll be used for, you know, with, uh, ARPA funding, uh, in COVID, there's been a number of projects that, well, we work with our consultants or contractors to get estimates on the projects. We bid them out, they come in higher than estimated, so, uh, sometimes it's significant, sometimes not so much. This is a good contingency, uh, number for the, uh, the board to vote to approve, uh, and then as projects are presented that need to be, to use this contingency, we'll bring them before the board, but we thought it was prudent to set aside some funding because we're seeing this on most of our projects, they're coming in over budget. Uh, then after that, there's some DPW items related to wastewater, which is sludge handling and composting evaluation, emergency generators and INI remediation. Um, and then you see the eight seventy-seven that we have yet to allocate, we'll come back, we'll work with DPW on that, so that would be the total. How does that break down, uh, for twenty twenty-four? So you can see in the red, that was what was allocated last year. Uh, and you can see the majority of the funding is going to Water and Sewer Enterprise, uh, about forty-five percent of that this year. Overall this year, uh, it's really ninety-three percent is going to Water and Sewer and, uh, seven percent is, we have, is town government, but it's really the contingency fund that'll be used for a number of things. And then lastly, overall, when we look at this funding, the proposed funding for the last, for the two years, uh, two-thirds of that is going to DPW Water and Sewer and a, a third of that is going to the schools and general government, so I think it was a pretty fair breakdown. Uh, there's a number of needs, but the board is really trying to focus on water and sewer improvements, we've talked about that quite a bit. Uh, this is really important, the funding schedule. Um, as you know, the funds need to be committed, which means contracts need to be signed for projects that are approved, uh, by the end of twenty twenty-four. That's not that far away. Um, we've been working closely with the county when we apply for the funds through the county. Uh, they have a portal, they have a review and audit process. Uh, they've been making some gains on efficiency in that process, but it really takes about four to six weeks if all are ducks in a row to go through that process and get approved. Um, but as you know, as we move along, there's more and more communities that are applying for these funds through the portal, so, uh, we're trying not to wait till the last minute, so, uh, you can see on the left, August, which is tonight, twenty twenty-three, the select board hopefully approves the funding for the projects being presented. The goal is really to get all the applications applied for with the county by January first. Uh, that would give us six months or almost till April to review the funds, see if projects are coming over. If there's, projects come in under what we anticipate, we wanna be able to reutilize those funds. So, uh, we're anticipating by June of twenty twenty-four, the county may not take applications anymore because they'll need time to process them, so we really need to determine by April what we have for funding left. If we need to apply for the county, get those applications done and submitted by June. Uh, if all goes well and there's, even if they're submitted late by June, uh, we should know by July or early August if they're, they're approved and we can work on getting the contracts committed by December. So you can see this, it starts to, time starts to fly when, when we're moving, so, uh, we're acutely aware of this schedule, we've talked to Bristol County, Gary and I meet with, uh, the DPW director, Tim Barber, to really make sure that we're moving along and these projects are moving along once they're approved. Um, so, uh, DPW's been good about that, but it's gonna be all hands on deck to make sure that we get these funds committed, so. When we look at future potential challenges and opportunities, you know, the long-term capital planning committee has met. Uh, it's a, a good group, we're looking at a, a number of projects over time and how to fund those projects. Uh, Gary and I are working on some funding schedules to show to the long-term capital planning committee what, uh, the options would be over time, over the next twenty-five, thirty years. Uh, one thing with a lot of these projects, you know, we, we discussed, people are hearing these big numbers, forty-five million, twenty-five million. Um, the money's not being expended tomorrow, it's really over the next decade, maybe two decades when those funds are expended, so it is quite a bit of money, but, um, the, the way the funding will be scheduled, uh, you know, our goal is to have it as the most benefit with the least impact to the residents, so. Uh, what do we have for future capital expenditures that are possible? The recreation center, we're looking at a council aging master plan, there could be upgrades to that facility. As we all know, the Paydenarum Bridge, uh, we did get Mast Dot to fund the design of that, so we're hopeful that they'll pick up, uh, some of the cost to replace that. Uh, as you know, we just got two Seaport Economic Council grants for the Dias Landing, Dias and Upon Against It Landing, uh, master plan, as well as a boat ramp on Rogers Street. Uh, Bliss Corner, we have that on here, we're always, uh, acutely aware of what's going on there. The EPA's been working on cleaning properties. Uh, there's a lot that needs to be determined there as, as, you know, what the impact financially on the town could be, if any, over, uh, over the years. Uh, Tucker Road intersection, I thought Mast Dot came in and gave a really nice presentation to the select board, uh, on their alternative design and the benefits of that and, um, why they don't feel that Tucker Road relocation is necessary, but we still have it on here just in case, uh, once that project's done, the board wants to reassess. The Dartmouth schools, that's just, you know, pretty broad, but, um, you know, the school committee, uh, has, you know, as the board knows, there's a number of schools that are aging, they're very well-maintained, which is great, but eventually they're gonna need to be replaced and we'll have to come up with a schedule for that. And then lastly, water and sewer. This is in red because, um, these improvements really need to be funded because they're enterprise funds, that they need to be funded through water and sewer rates, uh, which is, you know, more of an impact because there's less water and sewer users than there are just total residents in town. Uh, so, but we will be working to take a long-term approach to that as well and, you know, Gary and I discussed that, to present that to the long-term capital planning committee. Some future challenges and opportunities there and that's it. So, what, tonight, if the board approves, uh, we would need them to make a motion to approve the projects for, um, FY twenty-four, the ARPA spending.
No, motion to approve the funding for two thousand twenty-four. Opera funds.
As presented?
As presented by town administrator.
I'll second that.
Second? Any discussion on that motion? Comments?
What I will say is having recently toured the DPW facility, I completely understand the items that are listed here and are happy that in the past year with ARPA funding in twenty twenty-three and. 2023 and in 2024, that we're taking some big-ticket items, addressing them, because the water and sewer rates, which is how they would have funded them ordinarily, the enterprise fund, could not have handled these needs.
I would also add that this is a giant coordinated effort, the town administrator, with the Department of Finance, a capital improvement committee, and of course, the Board of Public Works, identifying what can be done and how it can be spent and the deadlines. I've been involved with some other organizations, and I hear about other towns who have thrown together ARPA proposals, and they were not prepared in any way to get it done and on the books, and they were not ready to, and they had to, they had to eliminate the program because they weren't ready and did it a way that, if you're not chubbed ready at the time when you can go, then you'll lose those funding. And I think we've done just the opposite, and we've also earmarked the most important things. It's a real coordinated effort in a government structure that fights coordination, and in spite of that, we're doing pretty good, but you could keep an eye on it. And I, I have, lastly, I have tremendous faith in long-term planning capital now. We're looking at everything, from schools, bridges, and you name it, and we're going to try to prioritize those as well, which adds another whole layer of planning over the next, over the next two, one, two, three decades, and do it in a way that makes sense and sufficient. Great effort by a lot of people. Are we ready to vote on that motion? Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, 5-0, unanimous. Thank you, Sean. Next would be Fall Town Meeting warrant articles. Fall Town Meeting.
Twelve votes.
Way down the road?
Sounds like we just had Sprint Town Meeting. But we, generally, what we like to do is, we're still putting together the warrant, but I like to present the list of articles that we're looking at to the board, just to review. The next meeting, we'll come back with more of a draft warrant with the wording incorporated in it for the board to review again. And then at the select board meeting on the 18th of September, we'll have the board vote on the warrant. And also, on the 11th, if the board wants anyone to come in to present information, like if you want CPC Buddy Baker-Spith to come in to discuss the CPC articles, I can arrange to have him come in.
Can we make that determination tonight to give him a heads up, or is that possible?
I would think so.
Yes, I can, I can invite him.
Well, is that, is it just, would it be anybody besides Buddy Baker on this list?
He generally, oh, on the list? No.
No, I think it's street acceptances.
Yes, those are pretty straightforward. We can have town council review those.
So we can let him know ahead as soon as possible?
I can invite him.
Is that all right? Any other, any else, anybody else we want to hear from? Not significant here.
So just quickly going through the list. So the CPC has a Pascomance at Drinking Water Land Protection Project, and the Dartmouth Cultural Center Restoration and Renovation, Phase 1. The Dartmouth Cultural Center, that is a lease of town property with the select board. So this, before, they are applying for the funding, but they are tentatively scheduled to come in on September 11th to present their plan to the board, because part of the lease is the select board needs to approve any improvement, any improvements that are proposed to the facility. So they will be in here on the 11th to discuss that and discuss their requests in detail. Will?
Before you move on, is there a group, CPC will be giving money to a group that's going to be involved with the Pascomance at Drinking Water Land Protection Project? Would that be Buzzards Bay or DNRT? And I don't know who it is, so if Buddy Baker comes, could whoever is going to be working on that project also come with him?
Can I ask Buddy to do that?
Yeah.
I will do that. And we anticipate having an appropriation to the stabilization fund from Free Cash. Gary and I are currently meeting with the department heads on the capital planning requests for fall, and then we'll present those to the capital planning committee for their approval and presentation to the board here. We're hopeful to have an appropriation for collective bargaining agreements for a settlement, so, but we don't know. We're optimistic. We also have received another settlement checks for the opioid settlement receipts, so that's positive. Oh, I'm sorry, this is the opposite of that. The DART committee may be presenting a request to utilize some of the opioid stabilization funds for use as part.
And that committee can't spend it unless we go to town meeting.
Town meeting needs to vote.
Authorize the spending.
Very good. Then we plan on having street acceptances for Kyle Jacobs Road, Magnolia Lane, Ivy Way, and Sunflower Drive. And we have one citizen petition with regard to health insurance contributions by the town for employees.
Any questions? Comments? It does appear that Buddy Baker's a fellow we want to have in. That'll cover the rest of, the rest of it covered by internal team. Moving on?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Town Administrator update.
All right.
Sean?
So just as in FYI Wednesday, August 30th, from 5:30 to 8 is the opioid overdose awareness day event we're having over here at the Dartmouth Memorial Stadium. The Dolores Joseph, a youth advocate, and the DART team with Ms. Brooks has organized this event. It has grown considerably, so we anticipate it's going to be very well-attended. We encourage all the residents and the community members in town to attend. I think it's a great event to bring awareness, to overdose, the impact that overdoses have on the community, so.
We're going to have a police presence there?
Uh.
Should we consider it?
As support?
Safety.
Oh, I mean.
Parking and whatever.
We can.
With all those people, shouldn't we have somebody there?
Well, we'll discuss it with the chief.
Right, we bring that to the chief?
I will do that.
Can you go out there with her?
No.
Okay.
Sorry.
Okay.
All right, let's see. We've hired a communications coordinator.
Have we?
And we anticipate the person will be starting on September 6th. It's a Tuesday, yes, yeah, fifth of Monday, so. We will introduce the applicant at a meeting on the 11th, but you will all be very familiar with her. That's as far as I can say until she starts.
Okay, intent, nod, nod, okay.
Very, very good candidate. The board will be pleased. As I mentioned, we've been, Gary and I have met with the Selectman Tattelbaum and the Long-Term Capital Planning Committee and Bruce Brooks. Really positive meeting. A lot to be done, but a real organized approach. Gary and I are working on some funding schedules to present to the committee at the next meeting that I think will show that there's a lot to be done, but it can be affordable in the long term, so.
Just one quote from Chairman Almy from the DPW. He said, yeah, we get, we got these big, big things to pay for on the water, but he said you cannot do it sacrificing for other departments what's more, as important. And here's a perspective from a guy that could spend money until the cars come home, and he really understands the fact that as a team, we're going to spend the money in the right place. It's a pertinent comment.
And then lastly, Gary and his finance staff have been working closely with the banks to try to take advantage of the rising interest rates. There's one positive, and that is investment income. So Gary recently opened up a 90-day CD for 5.25% on $2 million. So we anticipate that, 5 million, and that is significant revenue generated from that investment income that helps with our local receipts, so.
90 days, you said?
Yes. So the reason for 90 days is because Gary and his staff anticipate rates will go up again, and we don't want to be locked in for the long term if we feel that we can.
Well, the banks are offering these, these rates, and they're betting that it'll go the other way. So it'll be a fine, it'll be a fine race to the finish line.
It will.
Always is, yeah.
Good luck to everybody.
That's all I have.
Okay, great. Under old business?
Plus Corner, no new updates. Same with, like, Nokochoke Municipal Broadband. We're finalizing that contract I mentioned at the last meeting, and Mass DEP Title 5 amendments. And it's up to the board. I don't know if you want to leave the Mass DEP Title 5 amendments on there since they've been put on hold while there is, you know, the board has been focused on water quality in the long term. I don't know if you want to leave the Mass DEP item on here.
The only thing I would add, it's sort of relevant, but not, is that we've been talking now about waiting for the fall and after town meeting, start looking at the giant issues of composting, et cetera. Is that what we can do as a town, and maybe as a group of towns that go to the state and say, we, just give us the ability to enforce the rules and make our own, and you can do what you want, but let us, those kinds of things, those issues. So I don't know if it's related to that, but that's something we are going to move forward to. But I think you and I agree that unless anybody else feels differently, we should get through town meeting and then move on from there.
Okay.
Then we need state reps.
Whatever it takes.
We need their support.
Okay. All set?
Yep.
Minutes? July 17.
They look good to me.
I had a, I had a couple of typos, but I'm not sure it's, not that important.
We can get those current. You can vote with the corrections.
Okay. I can give them to you. They're typo strictly. Any comments on the minutes of July 17?
Motion to accept with the.
Typo correction.
Typos corrected.
Okay. A second?
Second.
Second? Comments or questions? Let's vote on the motion. Mr. Mickelson?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, 5-0. Thank you. Select board updates. Is that the end? Mr. Mickelson?
So you want to do that?
Something to say?
Well, I got a few things.
Okay.
First is, a few months ago, a committee came before us to discuss a memorial for Bill Mosher. Bill held several town positions, including town meeting member, town clerk, treasurer, in several, several years as a member of the select board. A stone bench will be placed in front of the town hall with an inscription of Bill's dedication to the town. The committee is asking for donations for the stone bench. Checks can be made out to the William Mosher Memorial Fund and mailed to the Citizen Bank on Dartmouth Street, care of Tara Montero, or we could, you could drop off a check at town hall and leave it in the select, select board office. This has been a long time coming. They're trying to do this with a couple of, two or three people involved that are dear friends, including former Chief Zala, who contacted me to make this announcement. I encourage people to, whatever you can donate, donate whatever way, Citizen Bank on Dartmouth Street, care of Tara Montero, or mailed here to the town hall in the select board office. The other thing, I, this weekend, I had to go to Home Depot, and I noticed that maybe a little bit, a little bit of, with the, with the pressure we've been putting on everyone, someone's been paying attention because there had, there's not that many signs there. There are a few, but nothing, not inundated. So I was very, very happy about that, and I want to call, I think David Tattelbaum, the chair, and myself need to call Cookie Shapiro, the landlord of that property, and congratulate her for cleaning up her property. Thank you very much, and keep those signs off our property.
Okay. Any else, Mr. Mickelson?
Nope.
Mr. McDonald?
Yeah. Number, well, this one, this was unanticipated, but since Mr. Mickelson brought up the owner of Home Depot, I know a few years ago, we sent out a letter to the owner of Lowe's apostle regarding the access road from Best Buy to Lowe's. It's starting to be overgrown again, and vehicles are avoiding the growth, so they're encroaching into the other lane of traffic, so there could be an accident here. But that's also happening too, also on the Home Depot end, some of the growth in that area. So just a kind of a friendly letter saying, hey, you know, you guys hire landscapers, have them go out there and kind of cut back the brush. The other, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, we, the town received, you know, those grants from the Seaport, which you brought up, and I know there's a requirement for the town share. How is the town going to get that, the town share for those? Because I don't want to try not to lose, I mean, one of the grants is, you know, the Rogers Street, I think it was like 260-some-odd-thousand? You know, that's a significant amount of money. I was wondering, I don't want to see that lost. I know two years ago, maybe, maybe three years ago, Selectman Haren had brought up some kind of a mechanism to where the town would have a fund to draw on, to, to jump on, you know, the town share for these grants, and then to replenish them at a future town meeting. Are we, how is that going?
We didn't establish the stabilization fund. Generally, what we'll do is ask for, capital budget, as part of the capital budget process, ask for the funds to do that match.
Okay. I mean, are we, I mean, are we close to getting that, those funds, those matching funds for, you know, I mean, there's like, there's like five or six grants that, you know, through the Seaport Council that the town has gotten. I don't want to lose any of that money.
The question is, are we in danger of losing any?
Right. That's just it, you know?
Yes, no. So it depends what the grant is for. Sometimes if it's been for, say, the Harbor Master, it would come out of that enterprise fund, so that match. Or the Waterways has been here in the past to ask the select board for that funding. So generally, we do it as part of the capital process.
Right.
But we could certainly establish a capital stabilization.
Yeah. So, so the other, the other question is, is any of these funds, do they have to be approved by Waterways? Because my understanding, Waterways hasn't met in several months, which brings me to another source of concern.
Well, Waterways has approved the applications for the grants, so they were aware, but the understanding was that the town would cover the cost of the match for these projects.
Okay. All right. So, which leads me to my other concern. My other concern is meeting frequencies. I am aware of at least the Waterways Commission not meeting for several months, but I also understand that the Council on Aging has not met for several months. I would like a report or information as to the frequency of some of the boards that we appoint and their meeting frequencies. And when was the last time that they met?
Maybe we go back to January and just list the meetings?
I would, to be honest with you, I would go further back.
Well, it's easier to get information quickly, but.
Right, right.
And attendance?
Well, the attendance we're supposed to get, so that's normal. But, I mean, I, I, I mean, it's, it's nice to be on the board, but meet once in a while, you know? Just don't sit and say, well, I'm a member of this, and not meet. You know, it'd be like us, not meeting for several months.
Or disband.
Not really. It's two different things.
If they've met their goal, they could disband.
Right, at least something. You know, just to get an update. I mean, some boards are advisory, some boards are policymaking, some board, you know, there's, we have a mishmash, you know? And maybe that's something that we also need to look at, is, is how do we want some of these boards to operate, you know? Do we want them to be in advisory? Do we want them to be policymaking, you know? I mean, everybody could use a little bit of help, you know? But I, I think it's, I think it's important that, you know, I mean, just to be a member of, a member of a committee, to say you're a member of a committee and not meet, you know?
Well, I would say to you that'd be pretty revealing, look at the, the meeting schedules, and you'd know pretty quick whether they're meeting on a regular basis or not.
I mean, I, there are some, there are some.
Require more meetings.
Right, right. The conservation's one of them. You know, I understand that. You know, Waterways, you know, I know that they can meet, you know? Why? I don't know. You know, Council on Aging, you know, there are things that come up all the time, you know? So I'm not sure, you know, I don't want to just, you know.
Let's get the information.
Yeah, I don't, I don't want to cash any as to reasons why, but you know, come on. I mean, this is how this town works. This town works. I mean, this is how this town works. This town works on volunteers and meetings. God knows, we have enough meetings. Let's, you know, just, but, you know, make sure we have meetings that have content. They actually do something.
Get the schedule.
Yeah.
I just suggest, it's already August, and just as a, as a way to gather it and look at it, go back to January, and then if we suspicious, go back to other and continue, go back and look at it again for other committees.
Excuse me. Interesting you say that. I've had four people ask me the other day how can they can get involved in bringing that sign out front. They truly want to be involved.
Yep.
So that's, that's, that's really heartwarming to me, getting some people that have never done anything. Two of them said, "I've never even thought of doing it," but if you read the sign, you say, "I think I'd like to, you know, give my, give my best. I'm retired."
Do we, do we have a consensus as to how back we want to go for this first look?
January's fine.
January's to start.
Okay, start. And then we'll go to others on a less needed basis. All right, Sean?
Yep.
Okay with that consensus?
Mm-hmm.
Great. Mrs. Brooks, anything for you?
I thank Mr. McGinnis for giving a shout-out for the opioid or overdose awareness event Wednesday night. But I also just want to remind everyone, everyone, that school is open, opening, first day of school for public school in Dartmouth is Wednesday. Our private schools are opening as well. There's going to be a lot more traffic on this, on this road come Wednesday. And just remember, those yellow buses are back out in force and...
Vote already started today.
That announcement, amazing that we're, we're going to be supplying, because of grants, lunches to all kids in school.
All kids in, in Dartmouth, yeah, which is great.
Commonwealth.
In the Commonwealth.
Commonwealth.
Which is great. There's a lot of food insecurity, and we don't know who it impacts, so this is great news. But if you do feel that you would qualify regardless, you should fill that out because the, the town could use that level of reimbursement.
Okay. Any else, Mrs. Brooks? Mr. Gracie, any comments?
No, I'm good.
Okay. I think we're done. Anybody else have something to say?
Motion to adjourn.
Second that.
Okay. Motion adjourned and seconded. Any discussion on that? Let's vote. Mr. Mickelson? Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mrs. Brooks?
Yes.
Mr. Gracie?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.